Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council Municipal Authority Meeting. It is July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven P. M. We're in the council chambers here in the Centennial Building at twelve South Fifth Street. Tonight, our invocation will be by Planning Commissioner Jeff Geis and then be followed by the flag salute.
Father, we come to you today and we thank you for your presence. We ask right now for your wisdom. I ask for wisdom and for all our council members that they guide our city and they help us. We thank you for the first responders, we thank you for the teachers, we thank you for the people in this town. We give you the glory, honor, and praise for the safety you've given us and the care, and we give you the glory, honor, and praise in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Selby.
Here.
Caccini.
Here.
Wooton.
Here.
Yanda.
Here.
Gilliland.
Here.
Right, do we have any presentations or proclamations?
None tonight, Madam Mayor.
Do we have any visitors?
I have no requests.
All right, then we'll recess right now as UConn City Council and reconvene as the UConn Municipal Authority. Item one A, YMA Consent Docket, this item is placed on the agenda so the UConn Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting of July sixth, two thousand and twenty-one; B. Payment material claims in the amount of two hundred seventy-nine thousand eight hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-two cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Caccini.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Wooton.
Yes.
Item two A, consider approving budget amendments for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote.
Selby.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Wooton.
Yes.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Caccini.
Yes.
It will now adjourn as YMA and reconvene as UConn City Council. Item one, Consent Docket, this item is placed on the agenda so the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting of July sixth, two thousand and twenty-one; B. Payment material claims in the amount of nine hundred seventy-two thousand dollars four hundred seventy-one, sorry, nine thou- nine hundred seventy-two thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars and forty-two cents; C. Designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D. Denial of claim number two oh nine nine seven three dash one from Joel Joseph for injury while playing basketball at Jackie Cooper Gym as recommended by the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group; and E. Setting the date for the next regular council meeting for August third, two thousand and twenty-one, seven P. M. in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Caccini.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Wooton.
Yes.
Gilliland.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes. Do we have any reports of boards, commission, or city officials?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to report that the smart grid project that we have on Garth Brooks will start in three weeks, and the Eleventh Street improvements will also start in, from two to three weeks. That's all.
Will those, um, will Garth Brooks be closed down, or will there be a one lane?
There'll be a one lane.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, item number three, consider a motion for one of the following: to deny the appeal, approve the appeal, or send the request back to the Planning Commission regarding the request from Ashton Gray LLC to rezone from C dash three, Restricted Commercial District, to R dash two, PUD Combined Residential District with the planned unit development, two hundred North UConn Parkway as previously denied by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion?
Motion to deny the appeal.
Okay, any, I need a second?
Uh, second.
All right, discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. You may recall, we were here before you, uh, a month or so ago, uh, on an identical appeal. At the time, um, it was submitted to you with a staff report that showed the designation under the comprehensive plan for the subject site not to be what it actually is in the comp plan. Based upon the minutes of the Planning Commission hearing from the first time that it was denied, the Planning Commission relied almost solely on the comprehensive plan as a basis to deny the application. So, we went back to the Planning Commission after this body sent it back, this time with a staff report that reflected the correct designation under the comp plan, that being the high-intensity designation under the comp plan. Staff recommended approval in the before and in the after still recommended approval, now, of course, because it was one hundred percent compatible with the comprehensive plan. Now, when we went back, Planning Commission's thoughts on it had changed, and they had changed from one of concern with adhering to the comp plan to one of concern with the fact that there was a potential that this development would result in renters. I don't know, I hope everyone's had an opportunity to read the brief that I've submitted, but I think it's worth looking at some of the comments specifically made by Planning Commission members as it relates to the subject application. First, a member at the twenty-four twenty mark said, "I'm concerned more about, I'm concerned about more rental properties in town." Next, someone said, "I wouldn't want to live next door to my renters." Next, someone said, "If you want to rezone and build, build big, nice, expensive houses, then I'll listen." Next, "Rental properties in UConn seem to be a fairly unpopular thing," and I tend to agree. Um, I think we need to look no further than the comprehensive plan to find that those remarks are out of character with what the actual goal of the city of UConn is. Um, in fact, if you look at the city of UConn's brand-new comprehensive plan that underwent a process of, of both engagement with the city council, the Planning Commission, but more importantly, uh, the citizens of, of UConn, what you'll find is, there is a problem right now within UConn as it relates to the lack of diversity of housing options. So if we looked at the text of the comprehensive plan at page forty-three, under the high-intensity residential, which again, is what this site is designated under the comp plan, it says, "These land uses are often found abutting commercial uses," which is what this site is, "and act as a buffer between commercial and low-intensity residential uses in UConn." Staff specifically points that out in the staff report that this R-two PUD would be a nice transition from the commercial to the lower-intensity, single-family residential. Moving on in the comp plan, under, uh, future land use high-intensity, what it tells us is that high-intensity land uses consist of heavy commercial and residential uses, and the density expectations should be less than thirty units per acre. We are squarely within that density range that the comprehensive plan, uh, anticipates. Next, if we go to page one fourteen, um, this is talking about the goals moving forward under housing. Top issues identified in your comprehensive plan: Housing stock lacks diversity of options beyond single-family homes. The lack of diversity other than single-family homes is what was considered a top issue in your planning, in your comprehensive plan. That's exactly what we are bringing forward in this application. Next, when it talks about multi-family housing at page one twenty-eight, it says, "UConn is fortunate to have a very strong retail market, but employees in this sector may struggle at times to find employees that lot, live within a convenient driving distance to the community due to a lack of affordable housing options. UConn is currently in the middle of seeing a sharp increase in senior citizens, with many other longtime residents also approaching that status. In an ideal housing market, there should be numerous options for these seniors to downsize and/or move into rental housing." And then finally, under recommendations, uh, at page one thirty-four, the recommendation is allow higher-density infill projects with urban, high, and medium-intensity land use designations, exactly what we have here. So, despite Planning Commission's concerned about, concerns about renters, this is exactly what the comprehensive plan is telling the council to do when weighing legislative zoning decisions. There was a handful of protests, some of the issues that were discussed were, were traffic. Um, the professional engineer Kendall Dillon testified at Planning Commission that based upon the commercial zoning that's there now, compared to the only twelve lots that we seek in this zoning, the traffic will decrease based upon traffic counts anticipated from commercial to duplex development. So, that is not an objective criteria that I believe is, is warranted for, uh, this council to uphold the decision of Planning Commission. I frankly see no objective criteria by which this body could side with the Planning Commission based upon staff's recommendation, the comprehensive plan, the surrounding environment. The other thing that was mentioned at the Planning Commission, Kendall, give me the aerial, was that they weren't going to consider the UConn Crossing. They, they wanted to, to view this application almost in a, in a vacuum. Yeah, and when you, when you look outside the property, which is what the law requires us to do, the law requires us to look at the basic physical facts of the property, including the nature of development in the surrounding area. So here's our subject track, we are seeking twelve lots. We in our PUD do not seek to vary any of the requirements that you have under your R-two zoning. We'll meet your minimum lot size, we'll meet your setbacks, all of the things that are required in R-two, we meet. To the west, the UConn Crossing does a PUD, and they actually reduced down the lot size from ten thousand to sixty-six hundred. There's over sixty lots in there. They also vary the setbacks, and that was deemed to be appropriate and compatible, and it's frankly in a very similar situation to us. Commercial in front, you've got more intense duplex, and then you've got single-family. Commercial zoning, what we are seeking are twelve duplex, duplex lots, single-family, single-family, and you've got more commercial there. So, all things taken as a whole, the comprehensive plan supports this development, your recent zoning decisions support this development, it's less intense than what was just approved in UConn Crossing, uh, the comprehensive plan frankly is squarely in line with what this development is. Fear of a type of person, that being renters, is no basis whatsoever for a city to deny a zoning case. You can have renters in single-family neighborhoods. Just the fact that these are duplexes does not mean that it rises to the level that we get to say, "It's renters, therefore it's bad." Clearly, our comprehensive plan is telling us otherwise. Our comprehensive plan is telling us, "We have too much single-family, we need other housing options." That's what this development provides. So we would ask that you reverse the decision of Planning Commission, siding with your comprehensive plan, siding with your professional staff. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think the council is, um, actually in a, in actually in a difficult spot on this particular issue. Some of the comments that you quote in your report and mention again tonight, uh, they don't look well in the context given, right? Um, and I don't think this council would, would, uh, use those quotes as any reason to, to uphold the denial of the, of, of the appeal you're seeking. So I actually would like to remove those comments from the, from the conversation because that won't be, none, I don't, I can't speak for everybody up here, but I can speak for myself, and, and, and those remarks won't have an effect on my vote tonight. So I, I want to set those aside, and I want to get to the issue, which is that you're asking us to change the zoning. I mean, when it comes down to it, you're asking us to change the zoning, you're not asking us to have compassion, or asking us to change our perspective on who may or may not be, you're asking us to change the zoning.
Yes, sir.
So that's what this council has to consider. We, we don't have to consider who we like or don't like, or who we want to live next to, any of that, that part of that conversation. For me, that, that's not actually a part of, of the conversation. It boils down to, we're being asked to change the zoning that is a, that has been established by our Planning Commission in a comprehensive plan. You disagree with their take on the comprehensive plan, and you make a pretty decent argument. But it wasn't the Plan, only the Planning Commission who changed their perspective between the first denial and this one, it was also, uh, what you brought to us tonight. So the last time you mentioned that there was a misunderstanding or mischaracterization, mischaracterization, or maybe just an incorrect interpretation of, of the plan itself by the Planning Commission, and you also last time mentioned, uh, uh, that it may in some ways be inappropriate for a city council to vote based on protests. And for those reasons, I move, uh, however many weeks ago, to send it back to the Planning Commission, ask them to consider those same issues. The, the lack of, of diversity in housing availability, um, seems to be addressed somewhat with the development across the street. I, I can't remember the, is there seventy-two, seventy-four units?
I believe it's sixty-something.
Six, sixty-something. Um, so I appreciate that, I appreciate that, I have friends in the real estate business that have asked me to consider the same things, that we do need more affordable housing in UConn, um, and this type of development sort of meets those needs, which is the argument that you've brought here tonight. Let me ask you a question about, um, codes and standards and some of these things that, that I'm not real familiar with on the language, but you said you would meet all the current requirements for development in the area. What about water retention?
Yes, sir.
Can we speak to that for just a second?
Yeah, I'll have Kendall Dillon, the civil engineer.
Okay.
Certainly, for the record, Kendall Dillon with Craft and Toll, uh, representing the applicant as well. Um, yes, for, for starters, this is the zoning, so it's more of a use, the drainage would come with the preliminary plaque. Um, but yes, y-you all, as the city of UConn, have a very clear drainage ordinance that we fully comply with, but as far as the drainage pattern, obviously, we accept water that comes under UConn Parkway from the Walmart site here. It's, it may be difficult to see, but there's a storm sewer that you can see that we proposed here. It conveys the water to a detention pond here in the northwest corner and discharges to the existing and historic drainage point on the northeast corner. So that's the drainage concept, the detention is detained in this location, and so we certainly, as we always would on any site, we, we certainly will adhere to all of your drainage ordinance, meet your detention requirements, and so there won't be any issues in regards to drainage.
And you wouldn't anticipate requesting any variances?
No.
Uh, or fees in lieu of retention?
No. It's accounted for in this plan.
Okay.
You mentioned something about reducing the traffic, I'm not sure I understand that concept.
I, I think i-in terms of traffic, when we say reduce, there's consideration as the current zoning right now is obviously C-three, which is a fairly intense commercial or commercial zoning. So if you were to look at today by right, what can we go build on that site, we could probably foot a, at least a forty thousand, if not a fifty thousand square-foot retail or, or some type of a commercial use. So when you're looking at traffic projections as engineers and starting to look at capacities of roadways and these sort of things, we would look at, what does a tr- a forty thousand square-foot retail building generate? On a, on a daily trip, that's somewhere in the neighborhood of four thousand, forty-five hundred trips per day. This development with duplexes, with twelve lots, generates a hundred and seventy-five a day. So you've got a difference of four thousand plus to a hundred and seventy-five, but really, when it comes to streets, it's the peak hour that really affects the capacity. The peak hour for that resi- or the commercial that we're talking about would be in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty-five trips per hour, whereas it's fourteen in this, in this project. So I think if you want to compare the existing zoning versus the proposed project, it's a significant reduction in the potential traffic. But the other thing that you all need to keep in mind when regards to traffic is, okay, you all as a city, because traffic affects everybody, every development, plus the people that's already, what's the approach in terms of how do we manage that? And one of the things you all do is, we have an obligation to improve the roadway and, and across our frontage. So not only are we propose, our project have an actual reduction from the appropriate or the, you know, uses that are there by right today, but you're also getting those improvements in UConn Parkway. So at, to us, the traffic, certainly with this project versus what I think some folks would just say, "Hey, we want to keep it commercial," it's significantly less.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, so one concern, um, like I said, and I, I don't like the conversation about what kind of people may or may not rent, I've rented for a significant portion of my adult life, I mean, that's, that's just not part of, but, when we talk about affordable housing, we understand that developers and builders have, have to also make money. So where is their building cost, uh, reduced? So, part of the, part of the very valid co-conversation I've had with residents in that area is my property value, right? And all kinds of things affect that. It would also affect it if an ONQ goes in next door, right?
Sure.
So, um, or, or whatever, kind of retail, so, um, so the question would be, has the developer, the builders, um, is there any sort of concessions in that, in those, in that realm as far as the building will be fully brick, will have a certain forty, fifty-year, uh, shingles rather than a fifteen, twenty-year shingle, uh, curbs? That, that whole idea is, as far as the type of construction we're using to maximize property value in the area.
Sure, that, and that's a, a valid, uh, question. Let me get the PUD out to speak to it.
And some of those may already be encoded with the, with the city, but you, you understand what I'm asking?
Yes, sir. Seventy percent brick masonry product is what is required, uh, in the PUD at section nine point one. So we have a, a heightened architectural standard within the PUD that would be above and beyond what your, uh, base zoning would require of even single-family.
Will you provide sidewalks in this community?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any more questions for these two gentlemen? I think we have someone from the cit, from the comprehensive plan that's going to speak. Okay.
Good evening, Miss Mayor, City Council. I'm prepared to answer whatever questions you may have with regards to the comp plan, but as-
Ma'am, could, could we get your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or the minute?
Cynthia Wright, contract planner, UConn, uh, city of UConn.
Thank you.
Um, as, as Mr. Box has presented, uh, there was initially a, um, mistake that was, uh, placed in the original staff report, that was corrected the second time around. Um, it is in total compliance with what the comprehensive plan has designated for this site, as are, uh, many of the surrounding properties, um, around the proposed development.
I'm sorry, can I clarify what, what you just said? Are you saying that there, the proposal, uh, is in compliance with the comprehensive plan?
Is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, yes.
Just not the current zoning designation?
The current zoning designation is also within the comprehensive plan designation. What the comprehensive plan lays out is a scenario of what might be located. So it differs from the zoning code in that the zoning code establishes specific, um, densities and zones for specific properties. The comprehensive plan is a suggestion as to what might be located in various areas.
Can you tell me, if we kept it C-three, what type of business might be in their backyards?
It could be anything from intense retail to offices, to, um, just about, uh, there's a whole laundry list of, uh, commercial, uh, uses that are permitted within a C-three. It is the, one of the higher-density, um, and most common, uh, commercial zones in the city.
Okay, so it could be a convenience store, it could be a doctor's office.
Yes.
Or it could be a Dollar General or a store like that.
Yes, for instance, um, the Walmart is in a C-three. The daycare that is to the north of this property is also C-three. So you have a differing of intensities between the uses that are permitted within the C-three district.
Well, I'll, I'll let the council know just kind of what's running through my mind in real time, and that is, do we want to be in a position where we decide every time a, a new business or facility wants to move into a place, that we do or don't want that type of business, which sometimes is necessary? But, but, but what if we deny this tonight, they sell the property and, and an ONQ moves in?
Right.
A few months from now?
And that was my question on that.
So, so then we, then the council has no say other than certain, uh, you know, maybe final plot type stuff.
I lived by an ONQ that was built in my backyard, and I'd much rather have personally houses, and I speak to you as the citizens, I have the bright lights, I have the trash trucks that come at five o'clock in the morning, I have them coming late at night, and the horn honking, and the constant traffic. So we're looking at that versus residential homes.
Um, could I maybe see that plan one more time? One thing I'm curious about is the, the water, is it on the, is it near the UConn Parkway? Is there a, a new pond basically in that area, or is it all going back to the bat?
We're talking about stormwater?
Yeah, well, or, uh, just-
Yeah, surface water or storm-
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, this is the Walmart over here.
Right.
And basically, water from UConn Crossing and Walmart come together at this general storm sewer. It's hard to see from there, but that's an existing storm sewer.
Right.
Here. Want to walk a little closer of that?
Uh, yeah, I can, I can see the general area there.
And we're connecting to, and we're, we're piping it up to the northwest, but that odd shape that you see there is a detention facility.
Okay.
And then the water from here comes around and discharges, so our development discharges into the same pond, it's detained and released to the historic discharge point here in the northeast corner.
So you wouldn't necessarily have a, like Wagner States comes to mind off Wagner Road, they have a nice pond that people are able to use for fishing and walking and, and benches, so you wouldn't have permanent standing water?
No.
In any of that?
Right, that's, that's a dry bottom detention pond, so it'll, it'll be dry unless it's a rain event, and then it'll discharge and, and it'll dry back up.
And who, i-is it in the plan, who would be responsible for the maintenance of that?
The homeowners association on, when you get to the final plat, there'll be a, a note of dedication and requirement for the HOA to maintain all the common areas and detention spaces.
And that's actual property owners would be members of that?
Or the entity of the HOA, yes.
The pub requires an HOA to own the common area, so there's a responsible entity to maintain, uh, the whole common area.
Will there be, are these units going to be up for sale individually, or is there already an owner who's going to maintain ownership of the unit?
I think either way, the, we have to plat it, so even if we were successful here today, we still have to go back through the plating process. It is designed in a way to where they could be owner-occupied. The market will obviously, you know, dictate that, but, uh, what you're seeing across the, the metro, you're seeing, um, young professionals and, and, um, empty nesters buying a duplex, living in half, and renting out, you know, the other half.
Sure.
Right.
Well, I have to tell you, my, my two biggest concern based on my, the people that, uh, put me in this chair, is that their, their property value is maintained, um, and traffic, which I think you've addressed fairly, uh, convincingly. So, um, I guess that's kind of what I want to-
Sure.
I would like a, a pretty solid concession that every effort would be made to maintain curb appeal and that sort of thing that would maintain property values.
Well, that can only be done by the owners.
Well, it could be done at the plat stage, too.
Well, and, I, so, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not a builder, and so seventy percent brick, I'm trying to, trying to picture what that looks like. So is it a certain amount from the ground? Is it certain, is it three out of four sides? Is it?
So it's all four sides, what, what, a seventy percent brick home is a, if you drove by it, you would say it's a, it's a brick home. The thirty percent allows for accent pieces on eaves and gables. Um, it's not where it's seventy percent, now we're, we're doing something else, it's just, it's a fully bricked home that allows for accent pieces, uh, you know, craftsman-style house is very popular. So you have, uh, wood, or you have, you know, the hardy board material that you end up with for the gables and the eaves and accent pieces, uh, from a visual perspective.
And what are the odds that that could change between now and development?
It can't. If, if approved, it's approved by ordinance, and it becomes the law that would run with the land. In order to change that, we'd have to go through this process again to seek a rezoning. And I will say, in the, in the PUD at section nine point two, it requires a- two, it requires a landscape plan at the time of development. Um, each dwelling unit is required a tree, and we require forty foot, uh, spacing of the trees around the common area. So we're adding extra landscaping from what the, um, standard R two code would require for landscaping.
Is there a sidewalk parallel to Yukon Parkway at the front of that development?
Existing?
Existing or in the-
There, there will be with the development.
We're required to build it.
Okay.
I think there may be one right there now.
I'm trying to picture it. It seems like it stops somewhere over in that area.
So if there's not, then at the permitting stage, we will be required to build it pursuant to the PUD.
I'd like to hear from some of the people. I think that's why y'all came. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time? Jeff?
Jeff Geis, seven thirty six Chateau here in Yukon. Um, I just wanted to, you guys are in a, this is a tight spot today. And I just wanted to clarify a little bit of the issue. I'm on the city planning commission of some of the things that were, were stated. Um, and some of the quotes that were stated before, I would like to clarify, I think it matters. I'm not going to try and put words into someone else's mouth, uh, but really most of quotes came from one person in particular. That, it sounded like it came from everyone, but it really wasn't.
We had access to the training script.
Yeah, and so I really would like, and I just want to clarify that for everything. But what I'd like to also say is, speaking from my position, when I stated that, especially even the first time, but the second time, that it didn't flow with the plan, the comprehensive plan that we had. The reason I was stating that is I'd like to read something real quick from our ordinances. It's appendix A, for, this is the city Yukon ordinances. It's our, the purpose of zoning and things. And it says, um, it says this ordinance is enacted for the purposes of promoting the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community, lessening congestion in the streets, securing safety from the fire, panic, and other dangers, providing adequate light and air, preventing the overcrowding of land, avoiding undue concentration of population, facilitating the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements, conserving the value of buildings, and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the community and promoting the development of the community in accordance with comprehensive plan. Now I have no doubt that they, that this plan, uh, that they have good intentions to build some good R two homes, some good, um, duplexes. Uh, the plans looked good on those. Um, we have in Yukon, if you look at, you guys can see it in the comprehensive plan, I know you all got it, you can see we have a lot of R two areas or places that can be R two in the area. This doesn't happen to be one of them right now. One of the things you can see in the comprehensive plan, and this is what I took into account when I was looking at it, was that one of the statements in there is that Yukon, we have about forty, I think it's around forty-four percent or so of the people leave Yukon to go work outside of Yukon. And then you can't take into account kids or anybody that stays home, but there have almost, it's one percent or somewhere around there that actually live and work in Yukon in total when you take into all the Yukon area. And one of the, the, the purposes of the comprehensive plan is to get it to where we have more people living and working in Yukon. If we have a commercial area now and we take it away, and I know, I agree that, you know, oh, we all don't want certain things coming by our home. I've, I've had the same thoughts in mind, that sometimes I've had to put out because I am speculating what might go in there, even though, you know, we know. So the, if we take away some commercial area that we could have some businesses come in there that could provide jobs here where people could live and work in Yukon, they actually stated in the comprehensive plan that Yukon actually has a very good mix of percentage of residential to commercial to this. They do state that we do have, that we are in need of more built, but our zoning is a great mix right now of that residential to commercial to, um, uh, commercial, uh, industrial, all that stuff. And we have to maintain that mix. So that is the basis upon which I was looking at these things as we're doing. And I know several of the other members also were looking at those same things as we're looking at the plan. That's why, to me, it didn't go along with the plan. And it's a little weird. If you look at the plan, we have Life Church, which is commercial, the C three. You have then this property, uh, which is C three right now, and then you have the daycare, which is C three. Then there's another church on the other side that's C three. So just because all these other places are there now doesn't mean that some days those places could close down and then somebody could come in and put an ONQ there or, you know. I mean, that would be stipulation then too. I mean, we could guess all day as far as that goes. But, so now you're going to have a C three, R two, C three, C three. And so it's not really even in that moment a transition between the other residential on the other side of that. Couple of the things I was just going to point out on it was, um, that when they talked about the high urban density that we're needing to get to, the comprehensive plan did specifically speak about that when concerning what to do with downtown area. That's where they really focus that area. You can see in the comprehensive plan, they have that drawn out, high urban density down there. Um, traffic, I understand that is a big concern for people, and I, I agree. Um, timing is also everything. And I, and you did speak about that very well, that, you know, but a lot of times people leaving in the mornings, I think that's when everybody was getting congested. It's when they were trying to leave in the morning and then get home in the morning. They say it takes them forever to get home and to leave in the morning. Everybody I spoke to, I had calls out the wall zoo, people come, can I say wall zoo here? I'm not sure what I mean. But yeah, but I had a lot of calls concerning this, about the traffic coming in and out when they're leaving, when they're coming to work. Um, typically your commercial, uh, people may be arriving at that time, but that's as people are leaving that area. So your coming and goings will be a little different. I mean, that's one thing to think about. And then, um, anyway, and I did state when we did that, when we talked about, I did state to them, I need to correct myself. I did state that I can't, I wasn't there for the vote on what happened on the other side, uh, that the other duplexes went on their side. I need to say, I was, I was wrong as, to an extent, as far as that goes, because, um, I was saying that I can't use that as my basis. Well, we approve this, we have to approve this. I ca- I should say, I need to use that because that's not even all complete yet. We don't even know what the whole traffic outflow from that's going to be by the time it's all said and done. And so we're still going to have that problem compounding into this area as it's completed. So I do need to think about that. Oh, we have this on the other side. So it could play into that. This is going to make traffic in this area worse. One of the things is, and we've talked, that road, uh, South Yukon Parkway from, from Thirty Ninth North needs to be fixed. It's not yet. And so maybe once that's fixed, maybe once things are done as far as that, this would be a different consideration we would be having at this moment. But as far as the planning commission goes, as far as my decision goes, when I was talking about it here, this is where I came to on this. So, thank you, guys.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Geis? Do we have other citizens who want to talk?
I had a question about the comp plan. How much did that comp plan cost us? Does anybody know? Million dollars, half million?
No, I think it was a hundred thousand.
Well, I just want to have everybody keep thinking that we spent a lot of money on these studies and, by the experts, and, and half the time, we don't even follow them. Uh, just like I've talked before about the water filtration thing. Two years ago, we had paid out thirty-five thousand dollars for a study that said what to do, and we didn't do it yet. So I'm just trying to get everybody to think about, let's not spend so much money on these studies if we're not going to follow them. That's all I got to say about that.
My biggest concern is, one, why did you buy property that was commercial? And want to put residential in? Why didn't you buy property that was already zoned residential?
So the, the location of it was, uh, what my client believed the market dictated for residential. It's been undeveloped for quite some time. It's been zoned for quite some time. So the market has not dictated that commercial, uh, is something here that was desired. Um, you know, they, they have the right to, to seek a rezoning. They consulted with, um, the folks that, that they look to as to what the metrics looked like from a end user standpoint. And based upon that and, and other factors, uh, you know, and it's not just Yukon, it's, it's across all markets are, are seeing this influx and need for different housing types. Because for so long in this part of the country, we've built nothing but, uh, single family residential on large lots. And the people that have built those are, are becoming empty nesters and don't want those. And the people that are coming up through high school and college can't afford, uh, based upon the cost of what a house costs now. And so having other housing types is something that is demanded in the market. And so it was a recognition of the market is demanding this type of use. And zoning is always subject to change, right? It's subject to change. You can, you know, file application and the, the things that you as the, the city are empowered to, to look to, um, to your vice mayor's point are these comprehensive plans. They're expensive documents because it takes a long time to do them. You hire consultants to, to go through, not only talk to elected officials and planning commission members, but the public at large. And the public at large is what dictates really, uh, what the goals in the comprehensive plan are. And so as it relates to this application, it is squarely in line with all of those goals, uh, that the City of Yukon paid for in that comprehensive plan.
Mr. Horton, what is the staff, can you tell us the staff's recommendation? And why they came to that conclusion?
Cindy would be the best, so I'll have her come back up here.
Staff's recommendation was for approval. This was based on the comprehensive plan. It was based on the proposed project meeting or being able to meet the zoning requirements of the R two. Um, it was based on the concessions, um, that were being made in a PUD. And I would, um, remind everyone that in a PUD as opposed to a straight zoning case, there are certain things that, um, you can ask of the developer such as, uh, increased, um, landscaping or screening or architectural materials that you would not have the ability to do in a straight zoning case. So based on the vehicle that this came in, the, the PUD, um, that was, uh, primarily the, the reasoning behind the, uh, recommendation for approval. And as it's been stated, yes, we did look at transition. And transition not just zoning. Yes, it would be C three, R two, PUD, C three. Um, but in the uses, the current uses and the potential for a more permanent buffering. So again, yes, that daycare could someday in the future, you know, develop into some other type of C three use. It would depend on how large that site is, how intense that use could be. As you probably all know, commercial uses tend to want to, to, uh, site closer to the main arterials because folks can see them and it's easier access and so forth. With the proposed duplexes, that would be a use that would be a stationary use. It would be residential. And yes, it would act as a buffer between the more intense uses of the C three zoning closer to the arterial and the, uh, single family that was located further north.
Thank you. I'm very conflicted. And one, we need more commercial in our community. We're looking for more tax space. This is already zoned for that. But then I look at our plan, and it falls in line with our plan. It's set there for a long time with nobody buying it for a commercial use because of where it's located. I look at the residents and see why they don't want extra housing in there. But I also want to warn you, sometimes there are worse things than housing, commercial parts. And so I feel like it, it's a very complicated decision and one that we don't take, um, decisions based upon personal feelings, personal deals of what is best for our city, what is right, and what follows along with what our plan is. Any more discussion?
Is there anybody in the room that could speak to, um, property value is a, is a thing that, uh, that comes up? But does the mere fact that somebody's renting a property downgrade property value?
And we're not guaranteed these will be rentals.
Correct. So there, there is a, um, there's a planning commission member in Oklahoma City who is an architect by trade. And I face the concern of property value almost on a every other week basis. Um, he has spent his career studying this very, uh, topic. And what he has found is, uh, typically the reverse is true. New development does nothing but help property values. If you just, I mean, if we're just going to look at the basis of the property value, if you're going to get your house appraised, um, they aren't going to appraise your house against a duplex if you live in a single family home. What an appraiser's required to do under the appraisal standards is find a comparable property. So it's going to have to be an apple to apple, right? So a duplex to a single family will never be a comparable sale. Um, therefore it can't touch the property value. What you're really talking about is, are you reducing the pool of, of potential buyers based on what's there? I would submit that, you know, pursuant to the, to the mayor's comment, having a, an intense commercial use across your backyard fence is going to reduce down your potential buyers more than a residential use on the other side of the fence. You know, for generations, for hundreds and hundreds of years, the way that cities developed was all of the different types of intensive uses were within one neighborhood. I live in a, a neighborhood close to downtown Oklahoma City that was one of the first neighborhoods built. And in my neighborhood, we have an eight story apartment building, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, and single family residential. The duplexes, quadplexes, triplexes, and the multifamily don't enter into the equation of property value, uh, because you're never going to take the appraisal of my single family home and compare it to what sold, what the apartment sold for or what a duplex sold for.
Any other discussion? One last chance for the home owners to speak. No? Okay. Let's vote. We're voting again to deny the change in zoning. So a yes would be you're voting yes to deny the change in zoning. A no vote is to say, yes, we can change later, or saying, right. Does that make sense?
No, say it again.
A no vote means that you're against denying. A yes vote means you want to deny. It's been a while since we've read this. Do you want me to read it again?
It's up to you, Madam.
Okay. We want to consider a motion for, to deny the appeal regarding the request from Ashton Gray LLC to rezone from C three restricted commercial district to R two PUD combined residential district with a planned unit development at two hundred North Yukon Parkway as previously denied by the planning commission. So we are voting to deny the appeal. Let's vote.
Yanda?
No.
Gilland?
Yes.
Selby?
No.
Kachini?
No.
Wooten?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to item number four.
Are you, are you going to approve the appeal?
Now, we voted to deny it. So now do we need to make a motion to approve the appeal? Okay. All right, someone needs to make a motion to approve the appeal.
Make a motion to approve the appeal.
Second. Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yeah.
Wooten?
Nope.
Gilland?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to item number four. Consider a motion for one of the following: to deny the appeal, approve the appeal, or send the request back to planning commission regarding the request from Craft and Toll on behalf of the Williams Family Investment LLC for a rezone from A agricultural district, district to one, I two, heavy industrial district, conditional use permit, and preliminary plat located at the north side of State Highway sixty-six, east of Cimarron Road, Canadian County, Yukon, Oklahoma, as previously denied by the planning commission.
Make a motion to deny the appeal.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Is that you again?
Yes.
Boy, you stay in it, don't you?
My apologies.
Okay.
For the record, once again, David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive. Uh, on behalf of the applicant, also with me is Jason Spencer, who is the civil engineer for this project. Uh, Jason, hand me the exhibit. So this is an application, um, that, at the planning commission had a, a bunch of different items. It had, uh, not only the rezoning, but a conditional use permit. Uh, and I think that's where, if you look at the minutes, things kind of- And I think that's where, if you look at the minutes, things kind of got off track. The only thing that was appealed to you is the request to go to I2 industrial zoning. So what I'd like to highlight is, when you look at this tract, it's sandwiched between railroad and a highway. So I mean, that, that's where you would expect to find industrial. That's where cities can benefit from having industrial users. Your, the ability to utilize the rail spur is significant. It's a very big advantage, not just to the developer, but also the city, because it can take a lot of load off the, you know, the highway system. Going back to the comprehensive plan on this item, this is designated under the future land use employment land. And so if we look at what that tells us, at page 59, it says that the designation should be limited to commercial or industrial uses. So what I would submit is that the current zoning is agricultural, frankly, is out of conformance with what the comprehensive plan is designated this site to be used for. It says that the employment land designation is intended to preserve land in Yukon for possible future employers and industrial operators. All cities need these type of users in their city to be successful. Having the ability to have a, a site here that is sandwiched between railroad and a highway is certainly a prime piece of industrial development. It's also, you, across the street, although it's in Oklahoma City, it is I2 within the City of Oklahoma City's zoning designation, all industrial to the south of us. Staff in this did also recommend approval based upon its conformance with the comprehensive plan. We believe this to present a wonderful opportunity for the City of Yukon to utilize that industrial property and perhaps limit what, you know, industrial users might end up in Oklahoma City and provide a tax base here in Yukon that, again, will be able to utilize that, that, that railroad. So it's squarely within the comprehensive plan. It is recommended for approval by your staff because of that fact. And again, if you look at what the, the future land use map actually says is, it's preserving land for only commercial and industrial, which of course, right now, we could do neither of those. So we seek to have the zoned I2, and we are asking for your approval of that designation.
I would like to know exactly what will take place at this location.
Yeah, so we don't know. We got to get it zoned before you can ever go market it to, to anybody. Any end user is going to first hire somebody like me to go check on a site's current zoning, and we'll say, get it zoned, and then we can talk. You can't even start to talk cost of, of building or lease rates until there are entitlements in place. There are some issues that will have to be addressed because of the way that the site sits with a big crest through the middle. We will have to go back to Planning Commission to be able to remove that dirt through a mining permit. We'll also have to go get regulated by the State Department of Mines. But in terms of an end user, we don't know. We know that it, there is a lot of excitement about industrial activity along a rail spur.
Is that land currently being used as agricultural?
I believe it has in the past. I don't know at the moment. Somebody bales it, and that's it.
So when you talk about removing dirt, so what kind of timeframe? I mean, how long would it take to remove the dirt? And what, what would take place? I mean, the atmosphere, the surroundings?
So this is Jason Spencer with Crafton Toll for the record, on behalf of the applicant. Basically, the process to, to remove the dirt could take a little bit of time to get the site to a pad-ready site based on lowering it down, trying to get it where, where grades are presentable for a potential buyer. That could be anywhere from, you know, a year to two years to remove that dirt off of there. During that time, what typically will happen with dirt moving, and this is, is part of what goes into the conditional use permit, is, is that the dirt is, is taken from the site, it's good quality dirt, and it's used somewhere else. And so it's taken, if we don't have a user ready to move the pad, it's taken over time when somebody's wanting the dirt, basically. And so if we were to get out there and, and have it, somebody that wants it, we could get it all done within a year. It just depends on the market, on, on how long that actually takes, though. And it, it, it doesn't mean that we're, we have to go and mine it. No matter what we do, there's going to have to be some element of earth moving to, to get a pad ready, to put a building on it. The ability to mine the dirt is because we would want to sell it. That's a separate use that the planning commission would have to consider at, at another time. This is just asking for the council to say that industrial uses on this site are appropriate. The manner in which the dirt gets removed would be decided at a later time.
But that's a big concern of the people. I had dirt moved behind my house again.
Sure.
And it was a horrible experience with that. But it didn't, you know, it didn't last long, so I can see their concern.
Sure, and again, planning, you know, that would have to get approval by the City of Yukon. Zoning it industrial doesn't guarantee that we're able to mine it. That's a separate application that would have to be approved by the city to be able to do that. All we're seeking, you know, is just the ability to start marketing this to industrial users in a manner that we think will be beneficial to, to the City of Yukon long-term.
Can it be used at all without doing that much dirt removal? It can't?
It depends. I mean, it would depend on, again, who the user is. Some element of dirt work will have to be done, just, just like there is, you know, in a single-family residential development. There's a crest in the middle, so some dirt's going to have to be moved to be able to make, level ground, to be able to build a, a pad for a, an end user.
I think that we're in a completely different realm here talking about the zoning change because we're talking about an agricultural zone being changed to heavy industrial. The big difference is the people that bought land and have homes across the street or next door. You know, I always, you always can look at the people that buy next to a retail lot, and then they get mad when a retail store goes in next door. Well, they knew that.
Right.
These, these people out here bought agriculture land or have owned it for however many generations because the land is agriculture land. And if we start putting heavy industrial trucks and towers and, and rigs and everything else, we've totally changed the landscape and the lifestyle of the people that live next door.
So I, to that end, there, I don't believe there's any single-family homes abutting us to the east. I believe these are tank batteries and oil and gas operations. Immediately to the west is undeveloped. You do get to a, a home as you go further west. But in terms of immediately adjacent, there are no residential uses. And again, and I get your point. I mean, that's kind of one of the, the conflicts that, that comes with the employment land. It's obvious why it was designated employment land. I mean, you have a railroad track and a highway. I'm not sure what else, you know, you would make of it. In the, in the future land use employment land, it actually says that the designation should seek to limit any residential development within it. So, you know, again, back, back, I feel like I'm, you know, harping this too much. But back to the plan, I mean, specifically telling you, limit all residential, limit the ability to have residential. Here, we don't have any residential directly abutting. I know there's some out there further, but directly abutting, there, there is.
Yeah, it says limit, but it doesn't say change it.
Mitch, can you tell us, what would be considered, what would be some items that could fall under heavy industrial?
Basically, it is our most intense use. Oilfield-related type uses would be a typical use for that, similar to what's across the road to the south. Maybe some outside storage. Could be somebody that uses rail service for whatever reason. Could be a pipe yard, stuff like that is an I2 use. That's the things I can think of off the top of my head, similar to what's out there, because it would be a similar use, I believe.
Do we have anyone from the community who would like to speak? Well, now you speak. I thought you were with the other people.
No, I'm sorry. I've never done this before. Teresa Worster at 3601, do I say my address? Is that what I said?
Mm-hmm.
3601 Crosswind, and I do live exactly, my family has spent millions on, exactly to the west of Cimarron and 66 building a neighborhood there. So we all live right there. And so obviously, the word heavy industrial is very concerning to me and to my family. And, you know, I just think of, I, if you've ever been out there, too, it's so windy. I mean, we can't even put fans on the porch. The, the blades blow off. So it's very, very windy. And so obviously, concern is anything blowing, whether it be toxins or dirt or whatever it is. I mean, it, really, the unknown scares me as to what is even going to be next. Yeah, you can deal with dirt for a while, but what's coming? And yes, we moved out there because it's quiet and agriculture and, you know. So, and we do have neighbors, so there are people living out there. But so I, obviously, noise pollution, dust pollution, and even the visual pollution are things that bother us and concern us. So, and like I said, I have, the unknown is what concerns me as to what is coming. And I don't, I don't know what that is, so it scares me to be for something right now, when I don't even know what the end might be.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jack McCurdy. I live 14800 Northwest 36th. I, most of you know me. I've lived here my entire life. I'm not here in any official capacity. I'm here as a homeowner that's going to be affected by this project. Every single, which is shocking to me, neighbor showed up tonight. I want to make it clear for the record, I do not represent those people either. I'm, I'm prohibited in my current employment from representing people. So I'm simply here because they wanted me to do the heavy lifting, so here I am. First thing I want to say is, they can dance around it all they want to. They want to change the zoning to put in a mine. That's what they do. Go a mile west, a mile south, you can see what they're going to do to the land. They've been mining it for years out there. That's what they intend. That's what they said at the planning commission meeting. They had a conditional use permit to mine it at the planning commission meeting. They withdrew it. When the first rezoning request failed, they withdrew that conditional use permit. That's what they're going to do. They're going to mine it first. The next thing they're going to do is they're going to rent it to the highest bidder. As far as the mining, I have pictures here, if you all would like to see them, of a, of a truck coming down the road next to and from the mine that they're doing now. If you can, if you want to look at these pictures, there's a ball of dust down that gravel road that is over 30 feet high and over 50 feet wide. That's what's going to be coming out of that piece of property 25 to 30 times a day. That's how many trucks come in and out of that property. That's going to leave our cars, our houses. Everything we own is going to be covered with this dust because they got to build a road for those big semis to come in and out of there. And that's what it's going to look like. Not even taking into account the mining operation and the dust and the dirt that it's going to spur. Go sit out there on I-40, I've done it. Watch the dirt and the amount of dust that comes off of that mine on a day that we normally see in Oklahoma where the wind's blowing either out of the north or out of the south, and you'll just see this ball of dust coming out of there. They try to water truck it, they try to keep the dust down, doesn't work. It just doesn't work. Again, if you'd like to see these pictures, I'll be happy to distribute those. The next thing that's going to happen is you're going to have 25 or 30 semis coming down that road over a blind curb, or excuse me, a blind hill, and have to turn into this piece of property. It's a 30-foot cutout that they got to turn into to get into the entrance to this property. I know that because I measured it. Now, you don't have to be a math major to know, to get a 70-foot truck turned around in a 30-foot cutout, you got to use your lane that you're in, the lane that's next to you, and the shoulder is the only way you can make that turn and get those trucks in there. So you're going to create a huge traffic hazard, again, on a blind hill coming up from Cimarron. And you're going to have these trucks taking up every inch of the road, making this turn into this place so they can get in there to get their dirt. That's going to create a huge traffic, including the increased traffic. It's going to destroy the curb cuts. You can go out there right now and look at the curb cuts and see what's been done by the trucks that come in and out of there now and try to make those turns. The next issue I'd like to address is, I have pictures again of what's coming after they're done mining. It's an oilfield junkyard. Drive a mile west of this location, and you see what's coming to this piece of property. And so my neighbors to the west are going to look out their back window and see oil rigs and every other piece of oilfield equipment that's been stored there because the business is down. All my other neighbors are going to look out their front windows, and that's what they're going to see, is all these oil rigs and all this oil fit equipment lying around. And again, I have pictures, several different views from the east, west, and the south of the equipment that's being stored on the place they've already mined. They mined it, leased it, or sold it, I'm not sure which, to this oil company, and this is what we have. We, as homeowners in this area, bought this land for that reason, to get out of the city, to have some solitude, and to not have to look at a nuisance right across the street from our houses, or right behind our houses, or right to the side of our houses. The I2 statute, or I2 change they're wanting to designate, the definition of heavy industrial is, by its nature, creates a nuisance and increased traffic, et cetera. That's the definition in the long-term plan, that, of the Yukon Long-Term Comprehensive Plan. That's how our, the industrial two is described. That's what's going to happen. There's no doubt about that. We have a right to the peaceful enjoyment of our homes and our property. That's why we bought it. And we don't want to sit out on our porch in the morning and drink our coffee and have to look at that, or hear that, or see the dust come rolling in and have to go back in the house because of the dirt is so bad you can't sit out there. I read the comprehensive plan twice. It's 180 pages. I wanted to make sure I read every word of it. I can't imagine, under any circumstances, did the drafters of that comprehensive plan, or the people who approved that comprehensive plan, would ever envision this type of business activity being conducted in the city limits of Yukon. I just can't see it. Do you really want the Oklahoma Tourism Travel brochure to say, "Visit Historic Route 66"? In Catoosa, you get to see the Blue Whale. In Yukon, you get to see the Oilfield Junkyard. Is that really what we want? We're a better city than that. Everything that's being done in this city shows we're a better city than that. I don't think, that's, what they intend to do, this is not going to generate any income for this city. And I'm asking, the other people can speak if they want, I'm asking on my behalf, my family's behalf, to make sure I word this right, deny the appeal that's been launched today. And again, if anyone would like to see any of these pictures, I'll be happy to distribute those.
Does anyone have any questions? Judge McCurdy?
Not really.
Not for you?
I would like to ask that lady.
Okay. Cynthia?
Cynthia.
Would you come back, please?
Cynthia, we've heard from both parties now, on both sides. Does the comprehensive plan tell us anything? I mean, which is right, which is wrong?
Again, the comprehensive plan is a, for lack of a better word, a suggestion of what the trends in the area are going towards. Because you have the more industrial uses, industrial zoning towards that side of town, because of the uses that are going in along I-40, that is why that designation was placed there. As has been said, you've got the railroad track there. You've got other existing industrial uses there. It's not trending towards a lesser intense use. It's trending towards the industrial side of things, the industrial nature of the, the city. And as you can see on the comprehensive plan, that's where a lot of your industrial is located, is that side.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
I, I would just say, on, on this particular issue, unlike the previous, I do not feel conflicted with being asked to change the zoning. The zoning, I would always take that seriously as a council member. Our planning commission has made a recommendation, and I don't see any reason to overturn what our planning commission has recommended.
So our planning commission said deny it. Our motion is to deny it. Let's vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilland?
Yes.
It is denied.
Thank you.
You get to go home, sir. You get to go home, sir, right?
There you go.
You had a busy night. Thank you for being here. Item five. Consider approving Resolution Number 2021-10, a resolution supporting continued participation in the Main Street program. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I just want to say how proud I am of our Main Street community. We have worked really hard. We're bringing, probably have one of the best economic development teams on our Main Street board right now. They have brought not just business, economic development, but philanthropy to our community and a sense of humanity. Let's vote.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item number six. Consider accepting Firehouse Sub's First Responder Grant Program in the amount of $22,180 for the purchase of two Polus utility vehicles and authorizing the expenditure of these funds to purchase the two Polus utility vehicles as recommended by the police chief. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Chief, could you tell us what they're going to, what could something like this be used for? Just crowd control or like Fourth of July?
Actually, all our special events. As we just finished with the fourth, we use a lot of golf carts that city staff with Parks and Rec brings in, allows for the officers to use. These will allow us to use these kind of vehicles. These are also four-seaters with a cargo bed, so we have some extra flexibility. They will be tagged legally under the statutory requirements with the state, so we'll be able to operate them on the street as well. But we'll actually be able to deploy them at every special event, which is a lot. We started kind of looking at all of the events we do and where we have in the past designated bike patrol officers to those events, being a limited group of officers within the department. With these vehicles placed in those events, we could assign any officer to work the event, not just a bike patrol officer. So it'll give us some flexibility with staffing, too.
Good. Thank you.
What I like best about this is it costs the city absolutely nothing. Thank you for working a grant. Okay, let's vote.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item number seven. Consider approving budget amendments for fiscal year 2022. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. All right. Any new business?
None tonight, Madam Mayor.
Good. Now it's time for council discussion. Councilman Gilland, let's begin with you.
Thank you. So I just want to address, most of them would be at home or maybe watching on Facebook, but the folks that voted to put me in this chair and now the rest of the people in my ward that I have the privilege to represent, when I stood on doorsteps and shook hands and knocked on doors and that whole thing a year and a half ago, or however long it's been now, I consistently answered the question, what do you want to do? Why are you running? And my answer was consistently to these folks that I'm, I want to be transparent, maintain transparency from that chair, and I want to ask questions. And I'm going to, I'm going to be frank tonight that I'm still working to maintain the transparency that I promised, and I will continue to ask questions because that's what I was put here to do. So just again, to be frank, there's been several times over the last few months I've been asked to ask my questions ahead of time. And rest sure that's not going to happen. I'm going to continue to ask the questions from this bench, in this room, in this forum, so that everybody can hear the same question and the same answer.
Councilman Kachini?
Oh, I want to thank all the city employees for doing a great job for the last few weeks. They've really been doing very well, especially with the heat. But I want to make sure that all the residents in Yukon remember what we talked about last two weeks ago. We need a sewage plant, and we need water filtration plant. So keep that in back of your mind. We need one ASAP. Thank you.
Councilman Wooten?
I'd just like to thank all the citizens that have called and reached out. I'm kind of echoing what Eric said. I'm here as a voice for you. So thank you for being involved and keep asking questions. It's what we have to do.
Councilwoman Yonda?
Well, I just want to thank everyone for being here. We appreciate you voicing your opinion, and we certainly take everything seriously, and we look at it in depth, and we make the best decision we can. Thank you.
All right. Let me tell you some upcoming events. Thursday, July 21st, at the park, Concert in the Park. It is the OKC Concert Band, starts at 7 o'clock. Concession is there. This Friday, Friday Fun Day is Sten Camp, City Park. It's free. It's 10 o'clock. They're going to make slime and lots of other fun activities. We had a wonderful Alzheimer's walk on Main Street on Friday last week for our community coffee. In response to the comments made tonight, we ask our questions ahead of time, so we'll be knowledgeable in our meeting and read our packet. Make the most of your tomorrow and be kind to one another. This meeting is adjourned.